So hi, everyone. My name is Neha Silvermanium. I use gender pronouns she and her. I'm a policy analyst in the city manager's office. And I'm here tonight to share information and provide a presentation on the city council ward boundary update and process. So a quick rundown of the agenda for the presentation. I'll present on the results from the 2020 census. Talk about some of the state and local government, state and local requirements that are at play as we go through this process. Propose an approach and also propose a project timeline. So as a quick refresher, every 10 years after the data from the federal census is released, the city of Hillsborough examines the population for the three council wards. So it's a requirement in the charter that two counselors reside from each of the three wards and are elected by the city at large. The table on the slide shows the population data for Hillsborough broken down by race and by ward, both from the 2010 census and from the 2020 census. This local population data was actually released in mid-August. The release of the data was delayed by six months due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So as you can see, the total population of the city increased significantly by 16%. And I'll also note that the Latino or Hispanic population grew from about 21,000 in 2010 to about 26,000 in 2020. So that means that people who identify as Hispanic or Latino comprise about 24% of our city's population. Here's a quick representation of the ward population by map again by 2010 and 2020. So Ward one saw significant population increase over the last 10 years. To put it in reference, the population variance between Ward one and two is about 33% and the population variance between Ward one and three is about 27%. So the Secretary of State released a directive on redistricting at the local government level, and this was released last month. So it's just kind of a list of considerations that we're required to consider as we go about our process for updating our own boundaries. So I'll just read them really quickly, and this is pretty consistent with what the Secretary of State released 10 years ago. So we're as much as possible required to consider the, the new wards to be contiguous, to utilize geographic or political boundaries, to not divide communities of common interest, to be connected by transportation links, and for the wards to be of equal population. We're also required to consider newly drawn legislative and congressional district boundaries. When we're drawing the new boundaries, we're not allowed to draw with the intention of favoring a political party or an incumbent or any other person, and it shouldn't be drawn with the intention of diluting the voting strength of a minority. And finally, we're required to complete the process with enough time for all candidates to file and to appear on the ballot and go through that process. So again, I want to emphasize that we're required to consider this as much as possible, but this isn't a mandate that we're required to base our updates on. And here's a quick overview of the requirements in our city charter. The charter says we are required to maintain an accurate and current description of the boundaries and that they must be set by ordinance, and again, that council members are elected by ward, but they serve and are voted on by the city at large. With the charter requirements, it's important to remember that these are in effect at the time of the election. So basically, the ward update, the bound, the update of the ward boundary can't cause an elected city counselor to forfeit their seat if the boundary update results in the counselor residing in a different ward than where they were originally nominated from. So if a candidate is elected to the city council and meets the criteria in the charter at the time of the election, then they are entitled to serve their full term. And then I'll also add, just as a general standard best practice, the accepted population variance among wards is typically 10% or less. And this has been informed by a ruling of the US Supreme Court. So here's a quick overview of what I'd like to propose. I say we or I because there are multiple people that have contributed to the conversations of coming up with this. So if I say we, it's, it's me referring to the project team. So as a quick refresher, what we did last time after the 2010 census, the city council adopted a resolution which specified additional criteria in addition to what the Secretary of State directive was for criteria to consider when we're updating the board boundaries. So that's included as an attachment in the staff report. But just really quickly, the council wanted to specify in 2010 that, or 2011, minimal ward disruption, maintaining compactness, considering future expansion and redevelopment, and considering neighborhoods and a sense of community. So for this year, we'd like to propose a project approach that centers on robust data analysis and community input and engagement that honors our city's commitment to inclusion and equitable community engagement. We've been in conversation with PSU's Center of Public, Center for Public Service to support this project and feel that they would be a tremendous asset to our process. Staff at PSU's Population Research Center are experts at working with local population data. Not only do they work closely with the US Census Bureau, but they also produce independent population estimates and projections that are used across the state and by local governments to ensure equitable distribution of things like tax revenue, also land use planning, appropriation of state funds, and other public policy priorities. So the Population Research, Research Center could support the data analysis element of this project. And additionally, PSU's National Policy Consensus Center, or NPCC, has experiencing developing, developing and implementing a project-specific community engagement plan, and they're currently doing that on the topic of redistricting and ward boundary updates with other jurisdictions in Oregon. The communications and engagement of this project could include a variety of things like a city webpage, social media posts, virtual events, surveys, as well as focus groups. Regarding engagement, we are specifically working to provide the community with opportunities to be heard and to influence how they're represented at the city council with the ultimate goal of demonstrating to the public how their comments and input were received and how it shaped the ultimate potentially two to three options for the boundary update that the council can consider. And additionally, we would also seek to speak to why some of their comments from the public might not be reflected in the options ultimately coming before the city council. And then finally, for PSU, I'll just add that a key benefit of working with them is that they would provide a neutral and they would serve as a neutral and independent party for conducting both analysis, data analysis, and community engagement. So the next topic, so I have Civic Leadership Academy. I guess I also meant to add ad hoc public commission to that bullet point. So when we started putting together the work plan for this project, we'd originally discussed convening an ad hoc public commission to help with things like identifying the criteria for updating the boundaries, providing feedback on the data review, and providing input on broader community engagement strategies. But then, as we were further discussing the potential scope and function of a public ad hoc commission, we realized this could also be an excellent project topic for the upcoming Civic Leadership Academy, which is slated to convene in the spring, just like as they were last year. And the, we could also just update or refine the application and selection and potential appointment of the Civic Leadership Academy to fit the format that we would need for fulfilling the duties that are required for this process. So some of the topics that either an ad hoc public commission or the academy could consider include things like the percentage variance among wards, or how much we want to account for anticipated growth, or if we want to take an incremental change or substantial update approach, or other criteria just to bring in front of the city council for updating the wards. And then finally, they could make a set of recommendations on the guiding principles and values for the council to consider and adopt ahead of the ward boundary update process. And they could also help identify potentially two to three options that are then taken to the broader Hillsborough community for more, for, you know, a wider engagement effort. So based on the feedback from you all tonight, we can go back and further develop the scope of work and the format of what this public body could look like and what they could tackle, and then bring that back to you for review and comment. And then finally, just on the timing of the, the update itself, we're proposing that the council consider adopting the new boundaries after the November 2022 election next year. The primary reason for this is to provide the community with an opportunity to engage the city on the ward update process and to provide meaningful input. The cities historically opened the candidate filing period in June for elections that are held in November, and updating the ward boundary during an open filing period might cause some confusion with voters or potential candidates, candidates that have, or candidates that have filed. So here's kind of the recommendations I just talked about in a timeline format. So we received the, the data from the Census Bureau in August. We'd like to spend the fall months working with the, with PSU to finalize a intergovernmental agreement and scope of work, and then work with them to conduct that review and analysis, as well as develop a community engagement plan. We'd also like to come back to the city council to share the specifics about the work plan based on the approach that we, we can establish during this work session, and then also begin implementing the community engagement plan and starting the process for recruiting the public body that would support this process. And then in the spring and summer, we would be implementing the engagement plan, convening the Civic Leadership Academy or the Ad Hoc Review Commission, and work to develop two to three ward boundary options. And then the fall, we would refine the, the options based on community input, and then deliver a final presentation to the city council in, in the, and in December, I guess, late winter of 2022 is when we are recommending the city council consider adopting new boundaries. So that is the presentation. So I'm happy to take questions, and I'm also happy to navigate to a slide if anyone is interested in kind of revisiting what's been shared.
Thank you, Neha. Are there any questions or comments from counselors?
This is Counselor Al Care. I just, I have a question about how are you going to identify, and I don't think you said this, but any particular area that's heavy in one political party over another. How are you going to figure that out? This is just your presentation, not the end product, but I mean.
Now that. Well, thanks for the question, Counselor Al Care. That is actually something we talked about with PSU, and that's just kind of exactly the type of thing they do. They have a lot of experiencing digging really deep at the block level with census data, and they also combine it with other data sets. And that's kind of the approach that we'd like to take with them. So considering political affiliation could be an element of, of the data analysis process.
Okay, thank you.
This is Counselor Van Beveren. When I first viewed this, I thought of South Hillsborough and the potential growth there and the pace of growth that we've seen there. And it kind of occurred to me that it was going to be a lot like Ward one had grown, maybe even potentially much faster and much to a much higher level of occupancy in those new homes. So how, how do you go about doing that in the 10%, you know, ward variation criteria?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. That is something is considered on a case-by-case basis among jurisdictions. And the level to which we want to anticipate for growth could be something that the public commission considers in, in combination with reviewing data that our community development department has related to growth projections and population increase by, by ward and by census tract. So based on just kind of like the research that I've done and folks that I've checked in with in other jurisdictions in Oregon, it seems like people take different approaches, or I guess councils take different approaches because sometimes you don't want to overestimate or over-project the population increase in a certain ward and then, and then maintain an imbalance for a long period of time if, you know, economic conditions change and development is occurring at a different pace than what we are expecting.
Thanks for that. I just thought it was kind of an interesting problem to resolve.
I have a question. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Neha, first, thanks for the briefing. I always appreciate how you go through so deliberately. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my, I have a couple of questions. One of them is along the lines of Counselor Van Beveren. Are we permitted to take into account, you know, if, if we did push this out, are we permitted to take into account, let's say, next summer, the increase in Ward three, the increase in population in Ward three? Or are we only allowed, according to the Secretary of State, allowed to go by the numbers that were provided via the census? That's question one. Do you know if there's rules around that? Because I would rather have a more accurate count, but I don't know if that's even allowed.
Are you referring to having a more accurate count in terms of population variance at the time of adopting the new boundaries?
Right, to include Ward three and the growth in Ward three. Are we even permitted to take those numbers into account?
So yes, I, so we are permitted to take those numbers into account, but I think the thing to also weigh is that we don't want to, we don't want to move beyond that, that variance that we want to establish earlier in the process. So say, for example, the, the public commission recommends this, that you all consider only adopting something within 5%. Well, then that kind of sets a guideline for how, how we ultimately adopt that. So there are, there, I mean, there isn't like a hard and fast rule, but it's within like a variance of a population at the time that we adopted, and 10% is kind of the, the allowed variance at this point.
I see. So even if, if Ward three grows, if it's within the 10%, okay. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think what I'm trying to say is if, if we feel like Ward three is going to like double, for example, right? Just for the sake of this argument, if we think it's going to double, then even if we feel very confident in the projection of that population, we don't want to, we don't want to set that boundary based on that entirely because then that could risk us setting the boundary that, in a way that the population variance doesn't meet the constraint of 10% or less. So does that make sense?
A little bit. I might have to talk offline more, or maybe someone else can ask a question to, to dig further in there. My, my concern is this, is that if we have, you know, I, I think the numbers were like 43 in Ward one. I can't remember, but, but I imagine that Ward three, you know, as I drive through there, yeah, thank you. That, that's a huge difference right now in Ward three. It's, it's significant. And so I believe, you know, just driving through there and seeing that the rapid building that's going on, I think that will change dramatically. And I think we'll see that by next summer. And so I was just wondering if we're allowed to take that into account or not. So, but it sounds like if it's within the variance, it's okay. But we're talking about variances between wards, not variances between the same ward from one year to another.
Oh, yeah. So we're, we are talking about variance between wards. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any directive or constraint on, on how we do the wards. Chad, do you have a, do you have input on this?
Yeah, thanks, Neha, for everyone. Chad Jacob is from the City Attorney's Office. So a couple of answers to Counselor Pace's questions. First, the census data is usually the most reliable data, which is why folks rely on that. If we can come up with a data set of a population next summer that is equally reliable and more up to date, we can certainly rely upon that. So there is a way to take the current population into account at the time we are adopting wards.
Okay, so, so we're allowed to do that?
We are allowed, but we have to make sure that the data is actually in fact reliable and defensible in case someone wants to challenge that. So the devil will be in the details about, you know, where we get that data.
Right, who does it? How much does it cost? All that, right? That, that could be more.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, you know, the, the massive amount of growth we're seeing there, we're going to, even if we push this out, we could be, be basing words on something that's outdated by November 2022.
Yeah, so, so two, two other points to make about that issue. One is that when you're, when you're setting the district populations or the ward populations, the 10% variance, you could basically start with Ward three being at the lower end of all three districts. So it would be close to 10% below the highest ward at that point in time. So then, as it grows, you basically have a 20% variance that it can grow to still remain within the 10% variance, if that makes sense. So that's one option you can look at. The other option is that there's nothing in state or federal law or the charter that precludes the council from redoing the wards again. If in fact, we reach a point, you know, in 2026 where the wards are so out of whack because of population growth. So there's nothing that precludes us from coming back and looking at it again. The key, as Neha said, however, is that at the time we set the wards, we have to be within that 10% variance.
Got it. Okay, great. And then my next, thank you to both of you. My next question is, you know, one of the issues about pushing this out is because we received the numbers so late in August, whereas in the past, a decade ago, they were received earlier, and there's many reasons for that, COVID being one of them. But I was wondering, when, do you by any chance, Neha, know when a decade ago, we received these numbers? Because if we received them in July and we're receiving these in August, that, that's different. But if we received 2010 census numbers earlier on, then that, I could see, I could see the reason for pushing it out. I just wanted to ask the difference in when we received those numbers, if anybody knows.
Yes, so in 2011, we received the numbers in March.
Wow. Yeah, that's a big difference. Okay, and kudos to you for knowing that.
I was like, you know what? Why am I looking this up? No one's going to ask me that, but here we are.
You're welcome, Neha. Those are my questions for now. I may have more in a little bit, but thank you very much.
Counselor Pace, if I could just add one, one answer as well to your first question, which is, you know, Neha walked through all the different criteria that the Secretary of State has laid out that doesn't preclude the council from adding other potential things to consider for the ad hoc commission, right, or, or Civic Leadership Academy. So that's another thing that the council could decide. We also want you to take a look at this. I don't know what that would be, right? Because this is pretty, pretty comprehensive. One example, I know that, you know, I've heard from a lot of people is the difference between, Hillsborough has a very high renter population, right? So maybe that should, you know, play into the conversation as well. So this is, this is what the Secretary, Secretary of State said, but there's also other things that the council could choose to, to add to that list as well.
Thank you.
A question, Neha. You know, so the, the bullet, you know, I guess it's top one on the right, right column. You know, no district shall be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party. Because we are elected citywide and we represent citywide, you know, and the wards are just to make sure that it's not, you know, one, you know, one block or one neighborhood that basically seats all members of the council. You know, then because it's citywide, some of those bullets, you know, again, diluting the voting strength, that really isn't possible, is it? Since, you know, it's a citywide election.
Yeah, I, so I think that the three bullets on the right, they apply to us a little bit more loosely, given the fact that we, we nominate and, and run by ward, but we elect at large. And that's kind of, that's what, you know, Chad and his team have also kind of advised us in terms of how this, this, this definitely applies to, applies to us, but not as directly because of the way that the voting structure is outlined in the charter.
Because if you look at the county where there are, you know, four distinct areas and only the voters in District Four vote for that commission, commissioner position, that to me seems much more applicable than, you know, to the county, for instance, than it might to, to our city and the way that we elect locally.
Yep, that is also my understanding.
Counselor Al Care, and then Counselor Allen, and let's see, Counselor Van Beveren, I'm not sure if your hand is still up from previously or if it's back up again.
No, it isn't. I'm on my iPhone and it doesn't give me all the options that.
Okay, all right. We'll start with Counselor Al Care and then go to Council President Allen.
Well, Kyle, were you waiting? I think you had your hand up, right?
No, go ahead, Olivia. Sorry.
Okay. Neha, can you go back to the slide with the demographics? And numbers? No, yeah, there we go. You referenced Latino, but they're not here on this list. So where are Latino within these numbers?
Right, so the census didn't collect, it doesn't identify Latino as a race, given the, given the fact that, you know, people that identify as Hispanic or Latino can also identify as white or black or a combination of multiple races. So that, that information was collected separately by the census, which is why it doesn't show up on the table here. But I did, we did look into that, and that's obviously a key piece of information that we're going to consider when doing the analysis and engagement. And I think I had mentioned the population for the, the Latino or Hispanic population grew significantly as well by about 5,000 people and to 25,000 residents in Hillsborough.
I think it would be important to, for us at the city, the census didn't do it, but I think as a city, I think we should identify Latino population separate from white. I think there's an assumption about that identity, and I think it's incorrect. And if we're going to do this in an equitable way and flash the DEI lens on this, then we should include separation between white and Latino.
Well, I appreciate the comment. I think that's something that we can flag to the PSU team to maybe disaggregate the Latino population and see how that population identified within the categories provided by the Census Bureau. I don't know if, I don't know if the Census Bureau released information in that format at that level, but I can ask and maybe circle back if, if that's even an option. I can ask and maybe circle back if if that's even an option.
And it's also important to know that um when given the choice and looking at this and trying to figure out what that is, people may choose native and not white. Part of my blood is Indian. It's a blend. But some people are identifying as Indian here. And so this is what I, why I think it's important to figure out. And I believe PSU, yeah, I think they could do that. And I think it's important to do. And I I think, like, I don't know how anybody here would feel not seeing, like, what if we didn't see white on here? I, this is not comfortable for me. This is not equitable for me. This is not right. And if we're gonna approach this in a way for our city, this is why I'm making that recommendation. I realize we're just at the very beginning of this, but I want to just mention that because there are different ways that people identify.
I I'm with Counselor Al Care on this one, and Neha, I know that you didn't design the questionnaire. Right? Uh, they they didn't call you, unfortunately, because it would have been a much better questionnaire. But I I did notice this too. And I don't know i- if that can be done, but I I agree to to separate that out. I I think would be really sharp. But again, I don't even know if we can do that. If we can, we should. But um, I want to reiterate the point that Neha, I know that you were not in charge of the um the questionnaire. So, thank you.
Um, I'll just uh add one thing as well. Uh, on one of the other slides, again, where it talks about the Secretary of State's recommendations. This is one other area where it, you know, recommends, I don't remember the exact language. Um, you know, not divide communities of common interest. I I can't remember if there's another one, but I think it's absolutely something we would want to take into account. And there's other ways to kind of get it that that we can look at and the PSU can look at of trying to figure out, you know, what parts of our community are represented by different levels of of different races or ethnicities. So I think it's something we could absolutely take into account as we go through this process.
Thank you, Counselor Al Care. Uh, Council President Allen.
All right. Thank you very much, Neha, for your presentation. It's wonderful. I'm gonna have you navigate the slides uh again, back to the maps, if you would. And uh, you know, just trying to walk you through my my thinking here. Um, so five thousand of the fifteen thousand new people that be came in Hillsborough were Latino. And if you look at this map, you can see that Ward One grew by about ten thousand people. So probably a disproportionate amount of of those folks live in that area. And so I was thinking, you know, how did that extreme growth affect the representation on council? And the truth is, it really didn't. Um, you know, if you look at, if you were to map where all of the counselors and mayors have been over the last ten years, you know, the with the exception of Ward Two, I think all of them have been north of Main Street and uh, what is that? West of the airport, right? Including our current mayor and previous mayor. And there's nothing wrong with the people that have served over the last ten years. I think you're all wonderful. Um, but, you know, it just makes me wonder, those ten thousand new residents, they didn't, they weren't added in the, you know, on Jackson School Road, you know, they were added in the Tannisborne Amberglan area. And, you know, as Robbie said, you know, we we kind of lack um representation for apartment owners, right? I mean, the majority of residents in our city live in apartments. None of our current counselor counselors are renters and um Megan Braise was the last counselor that I can think of back in two thousand fifteen sixteen that was a renter. So, you know, I would advocate that one of the things that they analyze is, where are we not getting representation from in the city geographically? And why is that, right? I think part of the the problem with the current map is that Ward One extends, you know, west of the airport, and it kind of divides Jackson School Road. And there's not a lot of demographic difference between, you know, the the left and right side of Jackson School Road, frankly. So um, I hope that they take that into account and they look at apartments. Um, they look at, you know, geographically where counselors and mayors have come from. Um, you know, I wonder if we had counselors from, let's say, Amberglan area, would there have been a greater focus on, like, development of Amberglan Park? Or library services or addressing rent increases? I mean, rent was increasing ten percent a year back in two thousand fifteen sixteen seventeen. And, you know, what issues were on the table that maybe could have been discussed or given more attention? You know, parking situation at apartments, electric vehicles at apartments, charging stations, uh composting for apartments. I mean, you know, how would uh, you know, people from various parts of the city look at these issues that we look at and provide a perspective that we haven't considered yet? Um, so I really hope that that's part of this. I really like the idea of the Civic Leadership Academy, um, taking a look at this issue and the addition of the Ad Hoc Committee. Originally, I was not in favor of us delaying the creation of these maps, but I do like the idea now that I've thought about it more of delaying this process so that we can get a lot of community feedback. Um, because I think, you know, these boundaries are important and representation is important. And I think we want to do our best to make a more equitable map and um, you know, deliver a great council through uh twenty thirty. So there's my opinion.
Thanks, Counselor Allen. Um, I did make a quick note on maybe doing an exercise on where previous counselors have um lived and how it pertains to the ward boundaries. I think talking about the impacts of or barriers experienced by those um those folks or maybe those who didn't run or considering what issues were or weren't considered at the council level because of where they live is outside of the scope of this immediate project. But I think maybe just even going through that exercise could kind of be a starting point for those other conversations if the council wants to consider barriers to entry to serve on the city council.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on that, that there seems to be a concentration of where everybody is um despite the wards. And so uh I concur with uh what Counselor Allen is talking about. One of the tenants that you brought up that we used ten years ago, and you didn't say that we would use them this year, but it was uh something that was brought up is to not change the wards too much. And and I'm thinking, maybe we look at that. And and if you, if you look at the maps, it's it's more horizontal, very loosely, more horizontal. Maybe we go vertical. Right? Where it's one, two, three, vertical, left to right or right to left, it doesn't matter. And that way, we're we're forcing representation out on the eastern side of the city. Just a thought, and I know that's down the road. You're asking about, do we delay or not? So, um, but I just want to next step with what uh Counselor Allen was saying. Thanks, Counselor Allen, for bringing up this point.
Um, so I think this has been a really good conversation. I don't actually have any questions for you, Neha, because the presentation was great. Uh, really good. Uh, but I do have some issues with how um the proposed timeline, uh specifically because of how it lands in with the uh with with the next election cycle. So a couple of points I want to, you know, echo, echo Counselor Pace and Counselor Allen's idea of mapping roughly where elected officials have lived. You know, not necessarily their exact house, but a heat map, because like people said, you're gonna see a big heat map of folks from Jackson School area. And and that's important for us to recognize. Also, uh, looking at the ward boundaries and how that plays out with race and ethnicity is important. Um, I I think it would be incredibly difficult for the city to do its own analysis of separating out white from Latinx, but I do think it's important for us to try and use that lens to disaggregate racial data as much as possible. I think that's been a recommendation uh from the Coalition of Communities of Color Report that came out several years ago now. So trying to disaggregate the data and find those communities, I think, I think would be important. Um, I also, I I definitely want to get this done before November of twenty twenty-two. I think it's important. Uh, you know, from a practical consideration, there are three seats that are up in twenty twenty-two. Uh, I don't know the plans of the other, the elected officials doing that, but two of them have an incumbent and one of them will be an open seat. And that open seat is in the ward that has the smallest population. And and the reason why I say that is because that's a point where we are practically looking at this and saying that this is, this is an area where we are reducing um the amount of people eligible to run for that open seat. They still have the chance to run against incumbents, of course, but it's just something that I think of when I see this. I personally see separating an ad hoc committee versus the Civic Leadership Academy. I think the Civic Leadership Academy does great stuff, and I think it's really important for them to look at issues like this. But because this is a very specific scope and we want to get a very specific thing done, I think I I don't, I I guess this is my question. My question is, or I guess my observation is, I am not sure how a Civic Leadership Academy could both learn about how every single piece of the city functions and do demographic analysis, do like looking at that community outreach. You know, I'd love to see an ad hoc committee formed. And uh in that ad hoc committee, I'd love to see one of the three or four, one of the four of the elected officials who are termed out on there. Uh, so that's myself, uh, the mayor, Counselor Van Beveren, Counselor Allen. Um, I'm not saying I have to be on there. I'm saying I would like, I think it makes sense to have someone uh as an elected official who uh doesn't have uh a stake in the game, so to speak. Um, uh, be able to to help guide because uh we we have a good knowledge of 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 how the city work looks and is laid out. Um, I also think it's important to do something like look at the history of kind of race, sex, and age of elected officials uh over the past ten years as well. Uh, because when we look at that in the context of ward boundaries and what the uh makeup, racial makeup of each ward board is, I think that'll be an important thing to look at. So some of the things I'm saying are things that that ad hoc committee would be. Um, and some of them are for right now. So just to repeat the things for right now, I believe it's important for us to get this done before the next election. Uh, between now and June, which would be the filing deadline, is about eight months. Uh, granted, that is definitely a a um a shorter timeline than just about a year. But I think it's very important for us to, uh, I I think it's important for us to be able to do that. Um, to to give folks the opportunity. If you can, if you file in June, you have the opportunity for folks to be able to look at that. I also think it's important to have a separate ad hoc committee. Um, because this work is very specific and critical, and I think the Civic Leadership Academy would do a great job. But I wonder about the ability to both be the Civic Leadership Academy and learn about how the city functions and also do this very important work. Uh, so let me make sure I got all my points. I apologize. I'm gonna take a quick second here. I really like, oh, also, I wanted to echo um uh the the importance of uh acknowledging growth. So, you know, agreeing on that framework as both an ad hoc committee as and a council, I think, will be very important and making sure that that ad hoc committee is, you know, separate from council and and from the city to give that uh, you know, independence as well. Uh, you know, we we may not have political parties and um, you know, uh, we are citywide voting. But it is important to make sure everyone knows that they are welcome and involved in this process and that there isn't a track, so to speak, uh, that it's already on. So, thank you.
So, um, thank you, Anthony. I agree with most of what you said. Um, but one thing is that it would be great if the folks who are getting turned out to participate in this. But as you say that, I'm thinking, hey, it's all white men. Where's the equity in that? Um, so I think that should be taken into consideration. I um, I don't want to have this figured out um before in the middle of campaigning and and when election's gonna take place. I don't. And um three people here didn't have to worry about that in the last election and they ran unopposed. Um, I want to say something um to what Kyle Allen said. I was a renter off of the hundred eighty-fifth until I became a homeowner over here near Shoe Park. And I feel now more connected to the city, um, not just being on council than I did when I was living over there. But we are a city of half renters and they should have some representation. I don't think that an elected official shouldn't be owning a home in order to qualify to be able to make decisions about how their city is running. And I think they should have some input. And um, you know, that area, there's a lot of retail in that area. There's a lot of business in that area. And um, transportation, um, this is all huge in supporting that area. And I think that their voice should be represented. And I was mindful of that when I was selecting people for our Leadership Academy. And BT, you were in the class that I was selecting from when I was thinking there. But I was thinking of who was in there and wanted to make sure that there was somebody from the Amberglan area who was gonna be in there. So I think it's important.
Any other comments?
Uh, I concur with uh Counselor Martin's statement about Civic Leadership Academy. That's only a six-week deal. Um, I went through it. I I don't know if they could knock that out in six weeks, but, you know. Interesting point that Counselor Martin brought up. So thank you, Counselor Martin, for saying that.
I think uh one of the more interesting points that was made was um to do with Am- or Amberglan and uh Tannisborne and that ward. Um, I, I agree that um Jackson School area is sort of one geographical and kind of community. I really think that uh Amberglan and Tannisborne are distinct um communities that have been traditionally underrepresented and to uh Counselor Allen's point, um renters, renter-heavy. Um, so I think it would be really great to see that uh more representation from the eastern part of our city.
Thank you, Counselor.
You know, I I, you know, I've heard a couple of folks say that they want to, they're they're comfortable with this timeline. But I I do want to stress, I I just think that it makes sense for us, if we have the data uh to do this. There is the hypothetical, which I understand could happen, kind of, it could go both ways. The hypothetical that someone could get elected and then be drawn out of their boundaries. Uh, you know, there's also a chance that we could elect someone and uh then the boundaries change, especially if we're looking at kind of a dramatic change, if that is the path we go down. And and that's the type of thing that I think it just makes more sense to to err on the side of, let's be prepared, let's have our numbers first. You know, uh, on on the upside or the scary side, uh, Counselor Al Care, uh, if if you don't necessarily know which ward you're in until June, uh, let's say, or May, May most likely. Um, and even then, you'd have an idea because options would be presented before that. There'd be a prolonged public, public comment process. Uh, that's still June through November. So that's a s- a solid four months of campaigning and most of the local campaign stuff, say for the mayor's race uh in in twenty, uh generally starts around then. So so I just, I I really think it makes a lot of sense for us to put this um, to try and get this done by by May of next year. I definitely recognize that that's a bigger pressure on staff and also, you know, making sure that's doable with PSU. So I think those are two definite important hurdles. But I think I I think it makes sense to do it faster.
Couple of thoughts. One is um, if we wish to have some um demographic data on electeds, um, you know, maybe it's worth also going back more than just ten years, because that's typically only two terms, you know, eight out of ten years. Um, maximum would be six if you had a little bit of leftover from one to the next. And um, so it might give us, you know, more of a, more of a longevity um, understanding as opposed to, I guess, more of a snapshot. Um, the other thing is, you know, thinking, you know, Counselor Martin, of your point, you know, because we run citywide, we're campaigning citywide. So if I'm in a lot, if I'm in Ward Two or Ward One, really doesn't change how I am running because I still have to get elected citywide. So um, you know, and I'm not, I'm not in, I don't think I'm endorsing, you know, a a faster timeline than was proposed, but I'm just saying that in some ways, the campaign is a totally separate issue because it's still, no matter where we live, what ward, we're still running citywide, campaigning citywide and being voted upon and elected citywide. And we're representing the city, not just a you know, not just a one-third population area of our city.
I I I really agree with that, and I appreciate that, because I I think that is one of the benefits of, I'm sure all the other counselors have had to explain the way we do this to both other cities regionally and nationally. And I I personally like that system. I think that even gets to the better point of, that means that we have the smallest ward being an open election. And and that, to me, just points out even further that it makes sense for us to, if if we know that the wards are going to expand um, to to expand that participation. That's a, that's a tag on, not partial agree and partial uh may potentially a different opinion, but I wanted to add that on. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and kind of, unless somebody has a burning, a burning comment, let me go ahead and finish this. Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and kind of, unless somebody has a burning, a burning comment, let me go ahead and finish this. And, and feel free to raise a burning hand if you, if you do. Otherwise, we have about five minutes till our meeting starts and that gives folks an opportunity to stretch their legs and get a glass of water or something like that. Robbie, I did see your hand up.
I was just gonna add, Mayor, obviously we'll do whatever the council prefers. If, if you want us to move quick, more quickly and get this done prior to the next election, we can certainly do that. I think our, our biggest hesitancy there was actually not so much about the campaigning. It's about the amount of community engagement and public input we get. That's a couple of months at least worth of stuff if we want to do it right. Uh, and this, that would, that would certainly condense that timeline. We can do it. We, you know, we certainly can figure out how. I just wanted to make sure the council's aware that we'll probably need to limit, um, or at least reduce the, the length of time that we spend getting community engagement on this issue.
Based on our experience with the alleys alone, community outreach is critical. So I'll just, and I'm not even trying to crack a joke right now, like, seriously. The feedback we got, um, was, was good and extensive, and I think we learned a lesson there, and I want to actually learn that lesson.
All right. Thank you. We will, um, take a pause. We'll conclude our work session and we will reconvene in our city council meeting.